Can you call a roll, John? Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Ms. Croft?
Here.
John, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance last time?
My pledge to lead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to introduce the board. To my far right is Kevin Brubaker. To my right is Greg Alec, vice president. I'm Mike Gebhardt, president. To my left is Jim Bax. To his left is Ayn Croft, our superintendent, Dr. Jama, and our treasurer, John Scott. I think Amy Higgins has a presentation?
Yes. Hello? No? Okay, we're on. All right, sorry, I was a little frazzled. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Before we start the master plan presentation tonight and the board meeting, we would like to recognize some very special people for some incredible work that they do year after year for the kids of Elyria. And that is provide winter coats for thousands of children who are in need. And... Speak of the devil. We have four entities essentially, but individuals within those entities, who have worked with us now for several years to give our kids coats. And they all come from different walks of life. It's actually very interesting. And I want to start with Ms. Shirley Massaros. Shirley, if you could see me. Shirley is a member of practically everything, but she... Thanks. She is most notably for us on the Elyria Schools Alumni Board. And Shirley started on her own, gosh, five years ago? Five years ago, she started a coat drive for Elyria Schools. And she does this, she organizes the entire thing herself. She advertises for the drive herself. She promotes it. We give her the help that we can, but she really is a one-woman army. And she does a two-day coat drive at the American Legion. And over the last five years, has brought in, gosh, 2,000, more than 2,000 coats for our kids. Mittens, hats, scarves, of all sizes. We've even had adult coats donated. And our parents have gratefully taken those as well. So Shirley, I just thank you so much. It's been such a pleasure to work with you. Shirley, I'd like to ask you to come up and meet the board here. And Mike.
Shirley.
Thank you very much.
Shirley, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Yes. That's a lot from the heart, guys.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, they're really, there's no greater advocate of Elyria Schools than Shirley. No, just thank you from my heart for this thanks of board. Appreciate it, okay? Next, we'd like to recognize another wonderful partner of Elyria Schools, and that's the Elyria Firefighters Local 474. And tonight, we're recognizing the whole department, but to accept tonight is Mr. Dan Budzar, if you don't mind coming on. We've had a relationship now with the Elyria Fire Department for about three years with coats for kids. And they actually bring their trucks. They bring all their guys. They deliver brand-new coats, American-made, made in America, yes.
Right, yep.
And it's Operation Warm. And they work through coats for kids as well. And the kids are just absolutely beside themselves when they get their new coats. And I know Dan has delivered many of them. So would you like to talk about that?
What we do, okay, all right. We did it, we partnered with Operation Warm a few years ago, where they supplied the coats for us, and we were able to come to the schools and provide them and distribute them from us. And then they was told that we were going to need to come up with the funds ourselves to be able to continue the process. So we went, I think, a year without doing it maybe, and we were able to supply what we had left over. But then we started, we were in a golf outing to raise funds, and we would, you know, we would do stuff like Make-A-Wish, or MDA, or things like that. Well, once Operation Warm told us that we needed to come up with our own funds, we got the idea that, you know, this was perfect for us. It was all the money that was going to be generated, all the, any dollar that we were able to bring in and get, we were able to keep in the city for our kids here in Elyria. So we decided to do, work through Operation Warm and hook up with the schools. And then every dollar we sent, we get, we buy a coat with it, and we distribute it at the end of the year. And that's the plan again for next year. We decided June, we're going to do it again. And that's our nonprofit that we're working with, so we'll do it again next year. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, all right. Thank you. All right, thanks, all right.
And I am not sure if Mr. Ballmer is here. We... Okay, all right. I want to recognize Eric Ballmer of Bee's Car Stereo in Elyria. Last year, he contacted me out of the blue and said, "Hey, I want to start collecting coats for Elyria's middle school and high school kids." Because a lot of the resources end up going to the elementary kids, where there's great need. But we also have great need at the middle schools and the high schools. And so he did coat drives specifically for larger-sized coats. And this is his second year, and he just, his patrons are so generous. He brought in boxes, I mean, boxes that you'd buy, like car parts in, like huge boxes. He brought in, full of coats for the kids. So we also have a certificate for him. And lastly, we want to recognize coats for kids who couldn't be here tonight, the organization itself. They also have worked with us over the years, but the last three years in particular, they have worked with us. And it's been an excellent partnership. They always think of us every year and contact us. And just before I close this out, I want to ask a couple of the principals, who actually were the recipients of the coats, to tell those of us, of the folks who are here, Mrs. Massaros and Mr. Budzar, about the impact that those coats have on the kids and their reaction to that, because it's pretty special to watch. This is Lisa Licht from Franklin Elementary School.
I just want to thank the organizations that are contributing to our students. One of the valuable things that we are able to rejoice in your donations are that we are taking away the excuse of why students cannot come to school. Because they don't have to worry about the fact that they don't have a warm coat to walk to school, or to ride the bus to school, or whatever they need to do. I have had several children where I have the teachers look out, "Do we have any students that don't have a coat?" And anytime that that happens, I'm able to call Amy or Heather, and they contact the organizations, not only when we've had the drive, but also the older kids that may not have been in the drive can also benefit from having a warm coat to come to school. And it's wonderful, wonderful, that we can count on you. And unfortunately, we have to count on you for some of these things. But it's wonderful that you are so open and giving to us on any of our needs. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
We could go on and on of stories from the principals, and the kids too, just so grateful for everything that you do every year. But just know that it means so much. So thank you.
I know you all came to hear the board talk tonight, but you're going to have to wait, because we're going to go right into our presentation on the master plan. Fellow board members, it's a great pleasure today to be at this point to go over the final master plan with you. And as your liaison to the master plan, I'd like to let you know of all the people that have worked within this master plan committee. This master plan committee is very experienced, very thorough, and very driven to come up with the right solution to our master plan. And it starts down at the end, as you're aware, we have Amy Higgins, who is our director of communication, Anne Slash, academic services, Jack Devey, who is the principal at Ely Elementary, Jama, we'll just leave it to Jama, everybody knows him, our consultant, former superintendent, Paul Rigga, our levy consultant, Vanessa Ayusu. Is it close? Okay. From AVG, we have Syadavist. And then we also have from AVG over here, Andre Smelters and Kevin Creepop. And then we also have Ryan Kokai, from the school's IT director. And we're going to start off first with, I believe, Mr. Rigga.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. I think a good place to start is at the beginning, and give you a little piece of history very briefly. This process began last spring. When some of you were just thinking about coming onto the board and got onto the board, we were notified by the state, the Ohio Schools Facility Commission, that our number was coming up, and that if we were interested, they would like to get into business with us. And if so, on the co-funded end, they would furnish 67% of the funds. That seemed too good to pass up. And at the time, I was still superintendent, so I ran it past the then-board. And they said, "Yeah, go for it. Let's see what's in there for us." And we did go forward with that. We've been working on that very diligently. We've done, I believe, our due diligence since last spring by beginning also with a survey. And you remember the survey that was conducted last year? And we wanted to test the likelihood of public support over a project this size, to have a bond issued to build new schools and add a sports complex. And there had been some talk in the community that there was a group that wanted to have a sports complex and have that run independently. We talked to them, and they were very patient. We appreciate that. And they waited for us to do our work, so now it is a combined effort. And the survey at the time did test that the people in Elyria, our voters, believed that a co-curricular approach to education is important. And they already proved that to us by building an absolutely beautiful performing arts center. And that was an LFI. That's a term that you'll hear tonight. You've heard it before. You'll hear it in the future. LFI is local funded initiative. There are things that the school district needs and wants that are not covered by the Ohio Schools Facility Commission. They provide us with a basic model of what you need to get things done. And it's an excellent model. And they do provide us ample space, and in this case, 67% of the money. But there are things that they do not pay for, and that's one of them. So we wanted to test that, to be sure that our public felt the co-curriculars were as important as we believe they are to the curriculum. And they said that they are. We believe that the community trusts us at this point. There's been a strong desire to be very transparent with them in the process. We have many opportunities now to provide our students with a true 21st century education by going forward with this project. We've been facilitating our meetings since August we started. We came to you in December. We had the master planning committee in place now for, I was just adding up the months today, and I can't believe it's been almost seven, eight months since we've been doing this work. So the time really does fly, and I know we're having a good time, because this is really good work, and it's interesting work, and the months have just ticked by. We came to you in December, and we're going to use that meeting tonight to build a bridge for you, so that you can see what you saw then, remind you of what you saw then. And also use it as a bridge to what we would like to talk to you about tonight. So we'll show you what's the same, and we'll show you what might be different. And if something's different, we'll explain why we believe that it should be different after doing our work and our research. We'll go ahead then, and take a look at, the last thing we left with you was an enrollment projection that wasn't final. And we told you that we would be coming back to you, and now we are. The initial finding had us what we believe to be a few hundred students short. Why is that important? Because student numbers drive square footage, and square footage drives the dollars. So the more kids you have in plain English, the more building you get, the more bank you've got. And we thought they were just a little bit low. They read our EMIS data, and we sort of drew back, and then worked with that department. And Ms. Youngless worked with us very diligently, and we found some things that perhaps they missed in the first go-around. And we were able to pick up a few hundred students, which would translate into hundreds, thousands of dollars down the road. You look at the chart, and they use last year. Well, why last year? Because that's where we began. We're on this journey, and now it flipped over into 2016. This is where we began, and so we had to question that number and this number. We could not question these numbers, because we're not there yet. These are all extrapolations and formulas that the state uses in a company called Future Think. I'd like to bring your attention to the center column. You notice that that figure there, 5,758 students, is in red. That's the year that the Facility Commission uses to determine the size of the schools. They don't build the schools. They don't say that they will build them for these numbers. And they're not trying to say that they're going to build them for these numbers, because they know that's a projection. It's kind of like the weather. The farther you go out, how do you know that's really going to happen? So they picked the center of it, and in the 2021 school year, this is the number that's been used time and again now in all the calculations and all the figures that you're going to see tonight. Whether or not those numbers are going to go up or down, who has to cross the ball? There are people that will say that if we build these buildings, then students will come back from charter schools, students that went and opened and enrolled in other school districts. We don't know that. And they don't know that, so they don't calculate that into these findings. But we're hopeful that they do. We know that the numbers are holding their own at the high school. We do believe that they are fairly accurate, though, when they do these projections. And so we embrace these numbers as a newly sized, a little bit now of a downsized Elyria City School District. And rather than worry about the differences, let's just embrace this and build accordingly, and make sure that we outfit the schools with the right number. Kindergarteners are larger than other schools, so the kindergarten numbers, we're not sure about those in terms of how accurate they're going to be. And we're not sure either about the preschool, because they have us decreasing a little bit. But we've been getting more and more preschoolers come into the district, because that's something that we emphasize, and that's also something that Dr. Jama is going to talk to you about in a few minutes. There are some key dates that are important for you to remember. Tonight is the March Board presentation, and that brings us to a very pivotal point. We're not going to ask you to make any sort of resolution tonight. We would like you to listen and take as much in as you can. Ask questions, please. Get your thinking going. Now, this is nice, because ordinarily, you meet about every other week with four Wednesdays in a month. But this month is longer, so I believe it's three weeks before your next meeting. So you'll have a good while to digest this information, ask questions. Dr. Jama, Mr. Alec, myself, or anyone on this committee, we can help you with that. We do want you on April the 6th to make a decision. Even though it's not required by law, if you approve what you hear tonight, or some version of what it morphs into after tonight based on your discussion and your input, your questions and your desires, then we would like a board resolution on the 6th that we can move on to the Facilities Commission on April the 10th. Our next hard deadline is April the 10th. That's the deadline for us sending to them our completed plan. Now, that begins another process on their end. They will then take that information into consideration for all of the rest of April and most of May. And then they come back, we hope, and we have reason to believe they will, with what's called NOCA, N-O-C-A, or a Notice of Conditional Approve, Approval. And if we get that initial approval in May, and we do expect that we would get that, that does require a board resolution. So in May, late probably May, we need to have you act on that. If everything seems to be according to where you want it to be, the numbers are working, nothing much has changed. If they've tweaked something, you'll agree with the tweaks. Otherwise, we would have to meet with them to hash those things out. That goes back to them for a very, very important deadline, and that's June 10th. June 10th is your approval of their Notice of Conditional Approval. And on June 10th, we're locked in. They then go to their controlling board, and they have to then establish the escrow for the money, assuming that we pass the bond issue in November. The June 10th deadline is another drop-dead deadline. That's a hard date. If we miss June 10th, we're out. And we have no intentions of missing June 10th. We anticipate getting this in their hands well before that, but we cannot go any later than June 10th. The master planning committee had recommendations that we brought to you in December. And if you familiarize yourself with the screen, you'll see that what we talked about were actually five elementary schools. One of them was going to be housed in a K, pre-K 8 campus at the Elyria West site. Built right into that campus, would be preschool through the eighth grade. And then four more elementary schools that would be standalone. There would be two middle schools that would be built in addition to the PK 8 campus on the west side. And you'll see in here that we, there were all these allowances that you find in here for abatement. The abatement and demolition of those buildings adds up to quite a bit of money. Most of the money is due not to bulldozing cement over our walls, but the abatement. Asbestos removal, because if you've ever seen, now they have to do that. The time consumption that's involved, and the special equipment that's involved, it's very, very costly. Now, what you've done is relieved yourself of two of those by selling two buildings since December. You've eliminated Edison and Jefferson from the list. The other thing that was on this list in December, because we were out there trying to project, and we were in discussions with the Ohio Schools Facility Commission at the time, and we got some very good news, which lowered this a great deal. The $3.4 billion LFI, local funded initiative again, for preschool will not be necessary at that amount. At first, we were told that we would not be getting any money other than for special needs students who are preschool students. But upon further confirmation and conferences with Future Think, the accounting company, our consultants from the Facilities Commission apparently didn't realize that we get credit for 40 students. So those 40 students are 40 full-time students. And of course, preschoolers come half at a time, so that's like getting 80 students. So when we took those students off of the list, you'll notice in the future financial sheets that I'm going to show you, that that figure has come down. Basically, though, this has remained the same, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about some of this and how it could change. We're going to try to walk you through some things now. And it makes sense by bringing you back to some slides that you've already seen again. But it's very important that you see them and understand where we are and where these things might be. When you're looking at the school district right now, this is the way we're laid out. You've got Crestwood across the grass from here, and Westwood, of course, and the Elyria West Village, we're all in here. Edison, you had, and in December, you saw that, that you sold that. Jefferson, you had, but you sold that. Oakwood is still there. Of course, the high school at the stadium are permanent fixtures in terms of what we're talking about here. You have Windsor Elementary School off of Abbey Road, Spring Valley, down the street, on Rosalie, Northwood Middle School. You have Ely, McKinley, Heights and Prospect. And of course, Hamilton, that you rent out to the Head Start program, which you own the building. Now, this next slide, let's get rid of what you had, and let's talk about what you saw in terms of a potential plan that we brought to you in December. Of course, Elyria High, already in place, the stadium, we'll be discussing that in a little while. And we talked to you about making a campus on the Griswold site, probably where we are right now in this particular part of the land. When this building comes down, that's probably, well, most likely where that is going to be located. Then we also brought to you that there would be a new elementary school at the Hamilton site. Here, you had a new elementary school at Heights. You would have a new elementary school at Ely. Ely, we do not believe we have to use any swing space, because there's enough room there to leave Ely intact while education is going on, while the new building can be built. And we would have had a new elementary school at the Spring Valley site. We talked about bringing in some middle schools. Of course, this middle school was already taken care of over here in the PK 8 campus. You heard about the middle school at Heights, where you already have one. And we talked about moving the Northwood Middle School up to the Pioneer Field at that time. And that would be the third middle school. We talked about, well, if you tear down this building, all the people that work here and do that good work for the district that Central Office needs to do, we're going to have to be relocated. And at the time, we thought, well, let's pick a building, and then we'll go from there after we do some tests on whether or not that building seems to be the best building, dollar for dollar, location, ease of any kind of renovation and that sort of thing. And we did pick Northwood at the time. So this next slide that you're going to see is similar. And I want you to notice that we have elementary school, and we have a middle school over here. And we have an elementary and a middle school over here on the same property. But now, as we move through these slides, you see that Hamilton just came up. And Hamilton is still a recommendation that we're making to you for a site of one of the elementary schools, with no change in what you heard in December. The same for Ely. We believe that's a recommendation to you, with no change being recommended. However, if you recall that there were the two elementary schools here on the Eastern Heights campus, they were two separate buildings. We've been listening to the public and getting a tremendous amount of reaction and feedback from our staff. They loved this concept so much when Dr. Jama's been on the road, that we took a look at, maybe this needs to be a campus, rather than it needs to be two standalone schools. Now, understand, though, in these campuses, very important to understand, these kids don't intermix. It's just the idea that you get the economy of scale with heating systems, cooling systems, water systems, electrical. You can use common spaces for different programs and that sort of thing. But all of the programming is age-appropriate, and the kids that are similar in age will still be able to interact with each other. But when it's important for them not to be interacting... But when it's important for them not to be interacting, they won't be. And when it's critical that there might be a need for a common space, they would be. So we find that not only is this a good education idea, but you could save about a million and a half dollars by doing that. Up here, you saw Pioneer Field that had the new middle school, and it had the Spring Valley School as well. Well, if we were doing it at two areas, we thought, let's take a look at the third area. And that worked very, very well on the space. The architects have agreed that everything would fit there on Pioneer Field. And probably the fields then, say the football fields, playground areas and whatnot, would be on the other side of that little ravine that's there with that creek that comes through, with some bridges for cars to travel back and forth over that creek. And they have looked at that. They are looking right now, though, in terms of the soil. And you approved at a meeting or two ago for them to do some engineering on that site. So this is contingent on the engineering report coming back and saying that that's a good place where you can build. We do know it's not in a flood plain, so that's good news already. And now they're going to be doing some soil testing, as they are at the stadium. With that, you'll notice that the P is there, the PK is there. And for that reason, we thought that by putting it centrally here on the Abbey Road Site, more of our kids would be able to get to the preschool more easily than driving to the far west side, which they do now. And looking at, and Dr. Debe was excellent at that for us on the committee. He took a look at the whole city. This would have cost $10,000, $12,000 if we would have hired somebody to do a GPS on this. And you contracted with him to do some work, and he has just been outstanding in that work. And he found that a lot of these kids would live in this area more than out here. And there are more out here that would come to that preschool if we were to build it there. So we're asking you to reconsider not having it over here and putting it over at this site at no change in dollars, just a move that seems to make more educational sense. This one only changes because the pre-K has to be removed from it, but it's still a campus. Now, instead of a pre-K campus to A, it's a K 8 campus. Now, we still have the problem of what to do with the people that work here. And we took a look at Northwood, and we took a look at what it would cost to renovate Northwood and some of the other buildings that might be vacated as well. And they're traditional schools without any kind of heating systems or air exchange systems, no air conditioning at all, the buildings that would have to be open 12 months a year. And the expenses were getting fairly high. And then we looked over here at Westwood, and we realized that we just put a half a roof on there not that long ago. And it was built at the same time this building was built. As a matter of fact, it was built just before this building was built. And it's much easier to transform that building into an office complex in a place where our maintenance crews can be housed out of than any of the traditional schools. You have more meeting spaces, you have no walls to get in your way. And with a few portable walls and cubicles, you've got ready-made office space, and it's already air-conditioned. So if you need to even get some new HVAC, you can do that at a far less price than trying to run duck work where it doesn't exist in an existing building. So there's a huge saving of money here, there's huge parking. And the Northwood Site has a new heating system that can be removed and saved and stored. So that's an advantage. Plus, if you were to keep that land, which you are right now, and you demolish that, the state will pay for the abatement and the demolishing of that at 67%. And then you can sell that land at a premium, I believe, for housing because of where it's located off of Gulf Road, right along the highway like that. And it's a big stretch of land, so you'd have that available if you wanted to sell it. So what does all that translate to? You have your plan here. Now, the highlighted areas are directing you to the two new campuses. You'll see that two elementary schools dropped off the list as standalones, and they are now combined in here. And as you've noticed that the abatement is still probably the same. We're going to leave the Westwood Middle on there. You might ask that question. If you want to go over to the middle, why are they still on there? Because you probably aren't going to tear it down. Well, we probably will need to have it abated. And if it needs abatement, then the state will pay 67% of the costs to abate Westwood, regardless of how we're going to use the building. The demolition cost would drop off, though. But our portion of that built into the bond issue would help put a few walls up. And we don't think it's going to take that much at all to make that into an office complex. So what you see is a total co-funded cost of a little bit under $120 million, $119 plus. You see the co-funded contribution down here. Our local contribution to be at 39 and some change, slightly under 40. And you see this huge contribution of nearly $80 million being given to you from the Facilities Commission. That concludes my portion of talking with you about what you saw, what we talked about in December, and what we've been talking about since then in the way of making a recommendation to you. Does that raise any questions before we go on and we go to Dr. Jama talking to you about LFI's?
No, Paul, other than when I reviewed this, and I didn't wonder about the abatement demo at Westwood. You've got that answer, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thanks for reading. We appreciate it. We always like that when we send things out. Thank you. Dr. Jama?
Thank you, Paul, and thank you to members of the board. But I also would like to thank the members of the Master Planning Team who are here this evening for all your hard work over the last, like Paul had said, eight months. A lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of energy has gone into this through open forums and discussions to have meetings on a regular basis. And I'm very proud of the work that you folks did tonight and the hard work that you put into this. I have the opportunity tonight to present to you what Paul had talked about in the very beginning, are the LFI's, or locally funded initiatives. And the screen that you see up on the wall right now is something that's very dear to my heart. And as you see here, some of the littlest pioneers in the Alaria City School District. These are our preschoolers. And these are our students that I have an opportunity to mingle and have fun with each and every single day through high fives and walking down the hallways and visiting their classrooms and dressing up pajamas and Santa Claus suits and reading to them. And I'll tell you, it's just something very, very dear to my heart. And the important piece that I want to get across to you, it's a very important piece of the Alaria City School District as well. The preschoolers are individuals that we focus on, and we put a tremendous amount of effort in because we know the bang that you get for your buck when you start the kids early and you have excellent programs in place to meet the needs of these students. Now, this goes back to my first several years out of undergraduate when I taught kindergarten. And I personally know the importance of providing a wonderful opportunity for kids at such a young age to get them started as they start their school path, beginning in first grade and beyond. But our first thing that I would like to talk about is our preschool. And as you also know, twice now since I've taken over as the superintendent, I've had an opportunity to even travel down to Columbus and meet with former state superintendent and Dr. Ross. The last meeting Paul, Ann and I actually drove down and met with Dr. Ross with reference to the preschool and to explain to him how important preschool is to our community in the Alaria City School District, and how important we feel it is to get our students, especially being in an urban district, started on the right path in their school career. So this is something that has been stressed over a lengthy period of time. And the Alaria Schools have always been the leaders in serving our littlest pioneers each and every single day. 30 years ago, and it goes back that far. 30 years ago, the Alaria Schools rented space at the Amherst Rehabilitation Center to service kids with disabilities. So this is not something that happened yesterday or the day before. But there is a track record of what the Alaria City Schools has done for our littlest students. We pioneered the all-day kindergarten with that same philosophy. Get them young and get them early because they will be very, very successful with the programs that we have in place, with the tremendous staff that we have with our youngest students. We know now, and we talk about this very frequently, that our preschool is now our kindergarten. As we now, and when I taught kindergarten 28 years ago, the students used to come in for a half a day. It used to take about a half hour to get their winter coats off and their snow suits. And you'd do a few learning activities with them, and then you'd have your playtime and learning center time. You'd have a snack. You'd have them pull their carpets out, and they would lay down for 10 or 15 minutes. And then guess what? They're all laying back on the carpet, ready to get those snow suits back on, and they went home for a half a day. But now we know that the programs that we have in place and the educational programs that we give these students each and every day are so, so beneficial. I use a line, and it's one of my favorite lines that Paul says quite frequently. If there ever was a silver bullet in education, it's servicing our youngest kids in preschool. So again, that's why it is so important that the piece that I'm bringing up here very shortly. Currently, the state only allows for 40 slots for preschool in their construction allowance. We need more than twice that to serve our population. And again, it's the importance of what happens at that young age is so critical in why we feel the need to do what we're presenting. They do cover all the costs, though, of our special needs in preschool. As you'll see up here on the screen, Paul's earlier presentation to you with the buildings, but what I'd like to focus your attention on right now, as is the preschool, which would be a locally funded initiative. It's a recommendation that would cost $1.5 million. And again, this is something that would be locally funded through the community. But again, going back to what I had just stated with preschool, we as a district feel so strongly that this is a vital component to the success of our students. And I'll tell you, most importantly, as I've been out over the last three or four months doing the community forums, several topics come up, what parents are interested in and community members are interested in. Transportation was a big piece, but this piece right here, having preschool for all students in the Alaria City School District is something that comes up at each discussion, and that's why we included it with our presentation this evening. Next on the screen, you'll see floors. And you're probably thinking, okay, why are you showing us floors, Jama? Well, there's a special and important meaning behind these shiny concrete floors. These are floors here that are currently on the floors at Alaria High School. These are polished concrete floors that have a wonderful, wonderful wear and tear that takes place each day when you have thousands of students walking on these floors as they enter the classroom. And this is an example of the art room right here. But again, what I'm going to talk to you now about is the importance of these surfaces as it relates to the master plan. As we now know, we build schools to last generations. We don't build them to rebuild them and rebuild them five and 10 years later. But as you know, as witnessing with Ely, McKinley, the Washington Building, the former Alaria High School, we build schools to last generations. And when you build schools to last, you need to put the extra upgrades in to make it happen. I could speak to this very personally as being the former principal at Alaria High School as well as the principal at Clearview High School. One of the locally funded initiatives in Alaria High School was to put terrazzo flooring in the main hallways as well as this polished concrete in many of the high-traffic areas of the building. And I could personally attest to you, as I just was in the high school last week and seeing these classrooms, that these floors today look as good and new as they did when they were installed six or seven years ago. And again, that's with thousands of students walking on them day in and day out. The other piece I would like to mention is, and something that when I was at Clearview, I did deal with a lot because they did the tile flooring that's allocated by the State of Ohio when you're using the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission monies. That when you have high-traffic areas, these tiles tend to pop up on a regular basis and become safety issues as well as issues that happen on a regular, regular basis. So again, the polished concrete is something that's critically important, especially when you have little feet walking on them each and every single day. It also is very important to protect our investment. We're talking about a project that's $100 million plus. It's very, very important to make sure we're using durable materials that will last. So as you'll see up here on the master plan recommendations, the first recommendation I made was the preschool. The second recommendation that we're making as a committee is upgrade the flooring in high-traffic areas at a cost of $1.5 million. And again, it's vitally important, as I had talked about earlier, in putting these types of floors in to get the biggest bang for your dollar when you're building these buildings. What do you see on the screen now? You see wonderful students and staff members working diligently in classrooms. And this is what I see each and every single day as I visit schools throughout this district. We have a phenomenal educational program that's led by our Academic Services Director with Ms. Sloss. And proud to tell you that wonderful programs are taking place each and every single day in our classrooms. But we also know that teaching today is much different than it was in the 1990s when the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission came into existence. And the space needed today is different than it was in the 1990s. Last week, I attended a conference in Columbus sponsored by the Bakai Association of School Administrators, and the topic was twofold. One, safety and security in our schools and facilities, and passing a bond issue. Talk about wonderful timing. Obviously, safety and security is always an issue, and we worry about that each and every day as our number one priority. And as a district, that's what we focus on as our number one priority, is the safety and security of our students. But the next part we spoke about, and I had an opportunity to even observe in many presentations, was 21st century learning. And again, 21st century learning is what we do today with our students. And it's not what was done in the early 90s and before. Teaching today is much different. We do not have the sage on a stage where a teacher lectures to students and stands in front of a classroom, and students sit in their rows of desks and learn through drill and kill. But these 21st century learning environments allow opportunities for students to work in pairs and in teams in an effort to get ready for the real world. These 21st century-type classrooms offer wonderful learning opportunities and give classrooms or pods the needed space for students to move around and have projects displayed while teaching's taking place. So again, it's a different way of thinking with the teaching and learning possibilities that take place in our classroom teaching every day. And I want to say that our students and staff are doing a remarkable job with some of the issues that they face with our current buildings as old as they are. But again, I just can't imagine if they had the space and the area that would benefit them, how much better it would be. As you can see up on the screen, I already spoke to you about the preschool locally funded initiative, the upgraded flooring in the high-traffic areas. And now I want to recommend, and this is the recommendation from the Master Planning Team, to add an additional LFI at $3.6 million to add additional learning space in the classroom. But I also want to go back to a point that Paul mentioned earlier. When we did the combination of, rather than having two schools at the Eastern Heights Campus area and at the Pioneer Field Campus area, by combining those schools to make a pre-K through 8 or a K through 8 building, we did save money that, again, we can put into the additional spaces that we're seeing now. What do we see here on the screen? We see wonderful people providing services to our kids with smiles on their faces. But look at the setting that they're actually in. You know, this gentleman here is sitting next to a hot radiator in a hallway while classes are probably switching throughout the building. This staff member here, what is this room actually? Jack, I think it's an electrical room. It's an electrical room. So, and again, we could tell, and this is at Ely, so I would assume some of this electrical was added after it was built in the early 1900s. So, but again, these are the services that are being provided to our students, again, in a setting that is not the most desirable to provide services in. As we know, it takes a whole As we know, it takes a whole village to teach a child. We also know then it takes space for the villagers to work and do the job that they do each and every single day. Our district, and this is something that I'm very proud of, and I know our staff and our school community is proud of, and that's the partnerships that we promote and the teams that we build and build with service agencies throughout the city of Aleria. I could specifically speak from Aleria High's standpoint and the middle school's standpoint that we deal with agencies that deal with drug and alcohol addiction, students who need emotional services as their support. And today, we're bringing these individuals into our schools to work with our kids, because education in the 21st century doesn't only take place with math, writing, and reading in the classroom, but it's that extra stuff that we provide and give them the support needed to be successful in the Aleria City Schools. The major issues that we do have today, we have literally utilized, and this is sad to say, but this is very true, we have literally utilized old shower rooms, bookrooms, closets, and hallways for these service agencies to provide their work. This is inappropriate, especially when there's delicate information being shared and they're dealing with critical situations with our kids. We also need space for occupational therapists, our physical therapists, our speech pathologists, psychologists, home counselors, and also just the simple space needed to have parent-teacher conferences. So with that being said, and the importance that's needed with the additional space in our schools to provide the services that we so much value in the Aleria City School District, the master plan team is recommending additional student-family support spaces in our buildings at a cost of $1.7 million. Again, as I had mentioned with my previous points, how important this is that we provide these services to our kids. In the Aleria City Schools, we have experienced much success over the years, and I know I can personally attest that that is due to the extra services that we are receiving from our agencies throughout the city and throughout Lorain County. Unprepared, though this is not a student going to class without a pencil and paper and not being ready for classroom, it's those unprepared costs that happen during construction. It must be realized that when you're building a multimillion, $100-plus-million-dollar construction project, that there are going to be unforeseen costs that do arise when you're building something of this magnitude. As you all know, and I'm sure we've done this at home, from building a deck to finishing our basement, we have it all figured out on paper and exactly what that cost is going to be for that deck. And next thing you know, you're a box of screws short, or you know, you're drilled bit broke, and there are those added costs that you just don't know are going to happen. I had mentioned this earlier with this team, that we have worked diligently to put a cost forth tonight to you that is the best that we can do at this time. But there are always, always unforeseen costs that do happen, whether it's things that happen in the earth when construction's taking place, and it could be underground utilities that aren't noted, poor soil, contamination, things of that nature. And I know at the high school during construction that they ran into these issues as well. So again, it's critical that you put a contingency in place. And what we're recommending to you tonight is a 5% contingency of $3 million. Again, these are for costs that could occur when you're building a $100-million-plus construction project over a period of time. So again, going back to the preschool upgrades, additional learning space, additional student-family support spaces, and now the contingency of 5% at a cost of approximately $3 million. And at this time, I would like to turn the program over to Mr. Elick, our board vice president, who will take on into the next phase for the stadium. Are there any, do you want me to ask him any questions? Do you have any specific questions right now with the LFI's that were discussed with reference to the master planning project?
As you could see on the last slide, there was one more space left for one more LFI. And before we get into that, we wanted to, before we talk about the stadium, we are very fortunate to be able to get a number of community leaders together and educators and have them go out and discuss with the community, get the community's input, and put a wonderful recommendation together for us, which we're going to go over in detail with you here. And we are fortunate to have a number of those members here. So anyone that was on the sports complex committee, please stand up, and I would like you to come up here when we call your name. The Honorable Judge Gary Bennett. Rick Hodgman. Your input is going to leave a significant imprint on the foundation of the future of Aleria Schools, and we greatly thank you for all your help. Now with that said, there was one last LFI left to fill in, and we're going to go in... I'm sorry. Was Heather here? I didn't see Heather. She was, okay. So let's get to that last LFI. Dr. John.
Thank you, Mr. Elick. And I would again also like to thank the members of the multi-sports complex committee for all your hard work, time, and commitment to what's best for Aleria's students, and with this multi-stadium complex, the student athletes who rise and shine and make us proud each and every single day in the city. As you can see up on the screen, we have some current photos of the many, many events that take place at our current stadium that Aleria High uses, from graduation to our football program, to our soccer program, the greatest band in the land, the Aleria High marching band, and then the Pioneer Pack you can see up here in the upper-left quadrant. As you know, our stadium currently sits with many, many issues due to its age and due to deterioration over the many years that it has been standing. As you can see here, this is the tunnel underneath the stands. Again, these are our visitors' bleachers. You can see the wiring that was done following years of use. Just the daily wear and tear of our current Ely Stadium and the needs that unfortunately it's not meeting because of its age, and it's something that our students deserve much, much better. The master, or I'm sorry, the master planning team, in conjunction with the multi-sports complex committee, came together as a group of individuals to share ideas, to get community input, to talk amongst themselves and residents on what they would like to see in a new multi-sports complex that would be housed where the current Ely Stadium sits. And obviously, the number-one recommendation was to replace the current stadium, just because of the condition and the wear and tear that has occurred over the years. Keep it at the current site. Have it host all of the sports that would take place out in outside facilities. Keep the seating capacity at 3,500 on the home side, approximately 1,500 on the visitor's side. Upgrade the locker room and restrooms. And I'll tell you, how many of you have been to the stadium and had to use the restrooms? Don't raise your hand, because you're probably saying, "I didn't do that." But most of us, most of us in here, if not all of us in here, have seen the restrooms at the stadium. And let me tell you, the old Cleveland Browns stadium men's room restroom was an upgrade to what is, what's currently at our stadium. We could also see some of the other recommendations that the committee has made through strong community support and hearing our community speak. Artificial turf on the stadium field, have an all-encompassing fieldhouse. And the other thing that the committee has recommended, and it's something that I'm going to talk about in a little bit, but is to appoint a special committee to pursue private donations. And as we move forward in the presentation, you're going to see that this LFI locally funded initiative is something that is going to be done in phases with, in phases, and you'll see that here in a second. Currently, this is the existing Ely Stadium as we know it today. You have your football field and your track, you have your varsity baseball field, your JV baseball field, you have your tennis courts, you have a gravel parking lot, you have the practice fields. But as you can see, the outline in yellow, this is the current property that the Aleria City School District owns. And going back to what the committee has recommended to the master planning team and the master planning team working in conjunction with ABG and our consultants, we're going to, the committee is going to be proposing... This is the conceptual site plan, what it will look like with all the recommendations once it is complete. Again, this is not the initial LFI that we are going to be recommending, but this is what the stadium multi-sports complex would house at its final, at its completion point. And we're looking at a new entrance boulevard, new parking and site circulation, a new football, soccer, and track stadium, new restrooms, locker rooms in a concession stand, reconfigured baseball fields, new softball fields, new tennis courts, new multipurpose playing and practice fields, and a Hall of Fame plaza that would link back to the many greats who have come through the Aleria City Schools and have played for the Aleria High School over the many years. What I'd like to talk to you now about is Phase 1, and this is the proposal that's being proposed to you tonight as a locally funded initiative. Phase 1 of the project, again, this is what would be included in the bond issue that is proposed in November, in November, that goes back to what we spoke to you about in December, whereby we would recommend a facility that would cost under $10 million, yet look at ways how we can continue to improve off the recommendations of the multi-sports complex committee. And Phase 1 of the new stadium segment would be, and again, this was what would be included in the bond issue in November without any type of private donations or any other types of funding sources that would come in. The key features would include a new synthetic turf field, all-weather polyurethane track, a main entry gate and plaza, upgraded home and visitor bleachers and a press box, Building 1, which is right here in the north end zone of the stadium, locker rooms, weight fitness room, training rooms, athletic office, banned storage, again, because it was determined through the planning process that it would entail and house eventually everything, home restrooms and concession stands, and a ticket booth. Building 2 to include visitor restrooms and concession stand, as well as the much-needed storage. And something else I do want to point out to you here, currently, this is where the stadium sits if you went out there this evening. As you can see, we're going to be moving the stadium south of the current stadium in the property that we own that I outlined earlier in the yellow. This is where the new stadium, Phase 1, would be housed. And you asked why we're doing that. Because through the master planning process and me meeting with community groups and the committee talking, doing this will give the ability of, one, to keep graduation without being disturbed, whereby graduation can still take place at the current site. During construction of the new facility, the games can still be played, and our seniors wouldn't have to miss a home night or a home event. And so what we do, it would lend itself to many, many positive things by keeping this here and during Phase 1, starting the process of construction over here. And I know the multi-sports complex committee recommended fundraising, and I know Paul mentioned in the beginning that there are groups out there that have come forward and spoke, saying that there may be private donations out there. And this phase is just the beginning. And again, how long will it take to get through the entire process? It's going to be determined by the amount of donations and the amount of private monies that would come in. Because again, what we're looking at with Phase 1 is what we talked about earlier in December, and that's keeping it under the $10 million mark.
Hey, Tom, could you go back just a second? Where on that is, it's listed, the main entry gate and plaza?
Main entry gate would be right here in the plaza, the circle.
Okay, so that entrance would come off of Middle Avenue?
Yes, and this here, as you can see, this would be your Hall of Fame walkway, walkthrough.
Okay, thank you.
What I'd like to do now is show the stadium complex as a locally funded initiative. Again, the goal was, and we talked about it in December, was to keep it at $10 million or under. With Phase 1 of the stadium complex, we're looking at $9.3 million. And again, that's what we spoke about earlier in December, and will do the early necessities that are needed at the stadium. So just to review with you real quick, as Paul had spoke about earlier, we're looking at a total of the co-funded amount for the schools at $119 million. The co-funded percentage, again, this is that 67%, which is $79,967,161. We have our preschool LFI at $1.5 million, upgraded flooring to high-traffic areas, $1.5 million, additional learning spaces at $3.6 million, additional student-family support spaces at $1.7 million, the 5% contingency that we spoke about at $3 million, and the final multi-sports stadium complex that I just presented to you at a cost of $9.3 million. But the point that I want to present to you here, and the most important point, and I have something here in a second, is this piece right here. And this is the share that the state of Ohio and the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission is willing to co-fund with the residents and taxpayers of the city of Aleria at 67% for almost $80 million. And to conclude my presentation with reference to the master plan committee and the stadium, I have something that's pretty exciting to share. If I could have Mr. Elick.
There it is, right there. That's what we're going to get. Can you see that?
Can you see that?
Paid to the order of the residents of Alaria and Alaria Township, the sum amount of pretty darn close to eighty million dollars. I tried to put it on my cellphone earlier, where you click it and deposit it, and it didn't want to work off of this.
And one thing too, about the sports complex committee, we do want to get to the total recommendation of the committee. So it is really neat how it's laid out for the architects to, and the builders to come in to the southern part of where the stadium is and build Phase One with dollars included in this levy. And then would give us the ability to go out and get more dollars from private donors and attempt to continue the rest of the sports complex committee. And that would be definitely an initiative we would want to get going on right away. We're very excited, and we do want to get to the conceptual site plan that we did get from the sports complex committee.
Greg, what would you estimate, what would you estimate that additional, that additional cost to be given in sway?
Estimate?
The total project estimate, the whole complex is around thirteen and a half million dollars.
Um, pardon, how much?
Thirteen and a half.
Thirteen and a half. Okay, thank you. So how much do you think this will cost the average citizen a month for a hundred thousand dollar house?
You know, great minds think alike, because that's exactly what I was just going to, to close with. Thank you, Mr. M. Hart. The total local contribution for the entire project would be less than sixty million dollars. And when we surveyed the public with our phone polls that were done in December, I was just going to say, I could say last year, and I was right, it was last year, but in the month of December, was, would you be willing to support a project that would be under twelve dollars a month? And we had a wonderful response with the under twelve dollars a month, and I'm proud to tell you tonight that the master planning team worked together to keep the number at less than sixty million dollars, which would be less than twelve dollars a month for the person who has the average home price of a hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at less than twelve dollars a month for a person who owns a hundred thousand dollar house to rebuild the entire Alaria City School District pre-K through grade eight, plus a multi-sports complex.
Now, can you break that down between the stadium and the, the schools? Just a estimate?
Do you mean how much for the stadium?
I mean, it's, the stadium is going to cost two bucks, about two bucks.
Eighteen percent of twelve bucks.
About two dollars.
About two fifty.
Okay.
Two dollars fifty cents.
You know, I, I remember a great point that Judge Bennett made when he was leading the multi-sports complex committee. You know, we at education use these, these initials, and I get MPCC and SCC and, but again, the multi-sports complex committee, Judge Bennett made a very good point. When you add everything together, co-funded is for the buildings that the state's helping pay for at sixty-seven percent, but when you add the entire cost of the entire project together, the residents of Alaria are still paying approximately, or the state of Ohio is still paying for approximately sixty percent of the entire project. So again, sixty-seven percent is co-funded with the buildings, but with everything added up, you're looking at approximately fifty-eight to sixty percent off the bill, which is a pretty, pretty darn good deal. You know, we've talked about, all of us now in our deadlines, and you haven't asked yet. Probably, this is just so much information, you're going to get in your car and think, "Oh, why didn't I ask?" Or next week, and just please, keep the questions coming. We are prepared, I believe, to get this on our website, the pictures, I believe, and all of that, coming soon, so the public can interact with the website. But we'll continue to seek community input, the PK eight and the multi-sport complex, these campus concepts, parents have been asking, staff has been asking, but we want to keep that out there. We have to do some formal surveying again, just to make sure that what they told us several months ago doesn't always mean what we were here today, but we think so. After those deadlines that I talked about, there's a whole new set of deadlines that comes up, you know? And of course, after we get our confirmation, we have to go to the auditor's office, and he will establish the millage. Everything we've done here, we've used tables from our bond council, from squires, and he has done such a great job, Mike Sharp, is just a wonderful help to us, and gave us a calculator, but we had to guess two items in their, in the calculations. One of them would be whatever the bonds will sell for, and we don't know what those bonds are going to sell for at this time, so he thought a very conservative figure would be five percent. If they sell for four percent, the millage would even be better. If they sell for more than that, the millage might not be up there. And I had to guess based on some treasure office preliminary findings, but we have no hard number yet, but they'll have a very hard number by the time the auditor gets their hands on it. What is the valuation in Alaria? If last was reported, that it was in the high teens of the eight hundred million, like eight hundred nineteen million, eight hundred twenty million. We calculated this conservatively at eight hundred and two million, projecting a possible drop. All the talk about the mall and some of these other, the companies moving away and those kinds of things could affect us, so we built in a drop that may or may not occur. So the millage and the dollars are a little flexible on those two points, the however much the bonds are going to sell for and whatever our valuation is. But that campaign, the formal campaign, of course, won't start until sometime this summer, because you, you can't sustain a campaign for more than three months. It's, it's difficult for even more than two months. But everybody's so excited about it now, they're already talking about it, so the superintendent has already taken it down the road. Poor guy, I see Java with Jama, and he's going to be at this church and that hall, and even if he gets five people, he's getting it out, so it's grassroots. It's the same strategy we used back in two thousand and seven. It's the strategy the city just used to get the tax increase passed. You've got to get a lot of information out to people, more than you would guess they would need. They need a lot of information, and they need to hear it more than once, because it's a lot to absorb. So we'll continue to use forums, we'll continue to use social media, we'll continue to do everything we need to do to get the word out, but at this point, we're sort of passing the baton to you to mull it over and think about it and have a discussion individually, with each other, or as a group in a special setting, if that's what you require. But we would look to you on April the sixth for something very affirmative on some version of the plan, if not exactly this plan, what you had in mind. Anybody from the master planning committee have anything to add along these lines?
I would like to add one thing, and you see my friend back here, Heather, working diligently, Paul talked about our soft sell campaigning, she's been live tweeting the whole meeting, so our hashtag on Twitter for this meeting has been #ECSMP. So we're doing lots of different things to try to engage the public early on.
That's cool, I didn't know that. That's good.
Paul, I can tell you, I can tell you, just in discussions with people on the street, people that I know, they are very excited about this. And so I'm going to, I'm going to certainly commend, certainly the master, master planning commission as, as the committee, as well as the sports complex committee. I mean, just a lot of work here, and you've given us a tremendous amount to look at, think about, and mull over, but, but very, very well done. Very pleased with this, and thanks goes to all of you, and, and certainly the people here on the sports complex committee, just, just, just really a nice job. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the opportunity, we all appreciate it. It is so much fun, because it's so exciting. Everything, everything we do and every time we make another step, it just feels so good to move that much closer to closure.
Again, I know you've all spent a lot of time on this, both committees, so I'd like to give you a hand. I know there's a number of you have to leave, so this is the time to do it, if you don't want to hear the rest. Bring back into it. Do we have any visitors signed up?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. A person wishing to address the board up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet indicating the topic they wish to address and make a written request to their treasurer's office one, one week in advance of the board meeting to speak for up to fifteen minutes. Each meeting participant will be invited to speak directly to the board, so that their remarks can be clearly heard and questions may be answered. We have nobody tonight. We'll move right into board, member of discussion? Kevin?
Yes, Mr. President, yesterday I had the opportunity to visit here at the administration building and visit several different department heads, as I think Mr. Bax did several weeks ago. I got to meet with Mr. Taylor, I got to meet with Mr. Wall, Mrs. McCready, Ms. Youngless, I'm sure there's one other one I'm missing there. But that, that opportunity enlightened me. I spent about four and a half hours here, I think Amy or Mary Wright allotted me a half hour each, and I think it took a little longer than those, but I was very impressed with the work that they do, the dedication that they have, the knowledge that they have of their positions. Actually, it was Brian Coke, I think, about the IT director. And the things that they're looking to do and create and the positiveness they bring. Tomorrow, I get to spend a few hours, I'll throw hours out there, because it's going to be with Amy and Ann, so that may take a little bit longer. But I give kudos to those department heads and the work that they do. I know Ms. McCready is leaving within a year, so I got to meet her heir apparent and see the excitement in her face, being able to take over that department. I got to meet some of the employees that were in the building here, and it's just a great atmosphere to be around, and I think all of that combined with whatever thing, we just dealt with the master plans, and we have a very positive event for our community and our schools over the next year or so. So I thank those department heads, and I'll thank Ann and Amy in advance for their time spent with me, so, thank you.
I do have one, one thing to say. John, would you stand up? John Scott? John's been our treasurer for the last eight months, he came on board when we last, was our last treasurer, so we wanted to give you a little bit of a gift before you go, it's nine o'clock. We appreciate your wit, your humor over the last eight months, and we will be amazed.
Thank you very much.
I would like you to want to say one thing. We would like to hear you say Greg's last name one more time.
Alec.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity, but it's time for me to move on, go back to my regular job, and I may have another gig this month coming up, so, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, John, thanks for stepping in and helping us out, it's greatly appreciated.
And I, I told her I wouldn't do this, but Joy, would you stand up? Joy Clevenger is our new treasurer.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, this, one comment. The, there is, I don't know, there's some of you in this room know about this, there is an effort underway by the Alaria Rotary Club to build, to make as part of their centennial celebration that will come up in two thousand and eighteen, they have a project underway to install a new, all-inclusive playground facility in Cascade Park, and that will be done in conjunction with the Lorain County Metro Parks. As part of this, as part of the, as part of the planning that's, that's going on at the moment, one of the things that we want to do is, on the committee, is entertain some input from a variety of sources, including public, as well as, because this is an all-inclusive type playground, we will be, we will be having some sessions with some folks over at Murray Ridge, and we would like to do the same. Dawn, I think I might have spoke to you with pupil services here at the Alaria City Schools, so sometime we would like to do that in, in this coming April, this next month, and so I'll be contacting you, and certainly we'd like to, you know, get you and Denise, and arrange something, maybe with Mr. Wall, that we can, that we can invite some people in to this building somewhere and, and have a session, let them look at the, at the playground concepts that we have, and look at, and get, and get some input in terms of, in terms of maybe some focus, some focus points that, that they would like to see added, or things that we might do differently, but we do have a concept in place that we can, that we can look at, and I will be contacting you on that, you and Denise. Very good, thank you.
Ann, anything? Moving right along, approval of board minutes, meeting minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the Board of Education Record of Proceedings for the meeting of March second, two thousand and sixteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the board meetings.
I have a motion by Ms. Croft and a second by Mr. Elick. Is there any discussion? John, would you call the, roll? Mr. Croft? I'm sorry, Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Kephart?
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasurers' actions. Item one, accept the financial report for the month of February two thousand and sixteen, which involves bank reconciliation, investment report, cash balance report, and appropriation slash expense reports as detailed in enclosure G one. Item two, to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G two. Item three, I'd like you to present items one and two to the Board of Education for their approval. I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer.
I'll make a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer.
A second. Okay, we have a, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Brubaker and a second by Mr. Bax. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question here. On page four, we have our cash balances, there's a number of them that are negative. So how exactly do we have negative cash balances?
We've been, during the last six months, we've been going through the financial statements, and there's a number of corrections needing to be fixed. And we fixed some last month, and I believe you were talking about forty-one thousand dollars in food service. That is probably normal, because you have to spend the money first and then ask the state for reimbursement, so you're always in the red until sometime late June. The uniform school supplies is forty-six thousand dollars in the red. This one here I was working on. What normally happens is students at the high school are issued, they have to pay fees. The fees don't come in most of the time, but the money has to be spent upfront for supplies that the kids need. You have a very high poverty rate here, and if they're on a free reduced lunch, they do not pay for supplies. That account is in the negative, it will continue to be in the negative until June, when the Board of Education is going to have to transfer funds into that account.
ordered to pay termination of benefits, because it was eighty thousand dollars in the red when I got here, and I'm, I will be, you will probably have to transfer funds in June to take care of this account. All they do is segregate some of this funds, and then the Board of Education just transfers money into those accounts to track it. Four thirty-nine public preschool, forty-eight thousand in the red. Again, it's the state, federal funding. You have to spend the money first, then ask for reimbursement afterwards, and it usually takes a month. And that's all the way down, every one of these four sixty, four sixty-threes, the five sixteen, five thirty-six, every one of those is state and federal advance, and you spend the money first, then you request, request once a month reimbursement. And usually in June, we had, I don't know what happens here, but we normally have to advance funds into those accounts, so you're not negative in June. Then you advance the money back, and you lock it back to the board.
So would it be safe to say that pretty much all but two of the accounts that you mentioned, we've spent the dollars and we're receiving the reimbursements?
Yes.
Okay, so all but those two. Okay, great. Thanks for the explanation. John, would you call the roll? Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gettler?
Aye.
At this time, there's no other treasurer to report. Superintendent action?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to recommend the following items under superintendent action this evening. Item number one, approval of stipends, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. The first one, hourly rate of thirteen dollars and seventy cents, not to exceed thirty-one hours total, to the following personal attendant for mandatory training for aides working at Murray Ridge. This program will be paid from the general fund. The second one is the hourly rate as indicated, not to exceed three and a half hours total, to the following health aides and care professionals for CPR and AED training. This will be paid from the general funds. Also, twenty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents per hour, not to exceed six hours per week for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year, for the following teacher to be substitute for the program for suspended and/or expelled students with disabilities. This item will be funded with IDEA Part B and general fund monies. Item number two, academic services, to approve the purchase of sixteen lock-and-charge carry thirty cart and four eighty Lenovo M22 Chromebooks from CDWG LLC at a cost not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and these are for Chromebooks that will be supplied at the middle schools.
All over the district.
All over the district, I'm sorry. Thank you, Anne. Excess cost contracts for non-resident child with disabilities, and this is an item that I brought to you at multiple meetings now, to authorize the contracts for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year for the Elyria City Schools, to provide special education services for a non-resident student. These services are contracted due to open enrollment, court placement, parental institutional placement, or cooperative agreement. The school district is the Cleveland Metropolitan Schools. Item four, to approve the overnight field trip for Elyria High School JROTC students to Manitox Scott Reservation in Peninsula, Ohio on June sixth through the tenth, as detailed in enclosure J four. Item five, approval of overnight field trip. To approve the overnight field trip for Elyria High School Special Olympics varsity basketball team to Columbus, Ohio on March eighteenth and nineteenth. Again, this is for our Vipers basketball team, and this team has won a state championship in the past, and let's hope that they bring another state championship home as the cheerleaders did a couple weeks ago. Purchase of a truck for maintenance, to authorize the purchase of one Chevy Express thirty-five-hundred van from Sunnyside Automotive, eleven hundred East Broad Street, Elyria, at a total cost of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Purchase under State of Ohio Term Pricing Agreement, which has already been competitively bid, and which therefore do not require bidding by the Elyria City School District. And with that, the disposal of the old vehicle, to authorize the disposal of the following one obsolete truck owned by the Board of Education of the Elyria City School District, which no longer is repairable, repairs exceed the value of the truck, and which in aggregate do not exceed ten thousand dollars in value. The make of the truck is a Chevy two thousand and one, serial number as, as shown. Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations for your consideration and the board's consideration this evening.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the superintendent as presented.
I move to approve the superintendent's items as recommended.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Bax and seconded by Ms. Croft. Is there any discussion?
Good question. Is Mr. Wall still here? What, what repairs needed on the van that we're getting rid of?
Frame's all right, there's holes in it. We're trading that van.
Okay.
It's got to go.
Okay. Great, thanks. Rided frame doesn't sound too good.
Any other discussion? Want to call the roll? Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gettler?
Aye.
Superintendent other?
Mr. President, I do not have any items under superintendent other, but I would like to proceed to personnel action as recommended by the superintendent. Item number one, retirement of certified staff, to approve the retirement of the certified staff as detailed below. Patricia Bruin, who is an auxiliary tutor at St. Mary's, effect of July first, two thousand and sixteen. The retirement of classified staff, item number two, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff as detailed below. Deborah Carpenter and Margaret Lucasto. Item number three, transfer of classified staff, to approve the transfer of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Julie Summers from Lunch Monitor for two hours at McKinley to a server at McKinley for two-point-five hours. Resignation of the classified staff, number four, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member as detailed below. George Morris, who is a utility at McKinley, and I do believe this gentleman took a job in Virginia, Gary?
Yes.
In the state of Virginia. So again, we'll be getting that position posted and filmed as soon as possible. Item number five, unpaid leave of absence, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following classified member as detailed below. Carol Warden, Monitor at Crestwood. Item number six, employees for athletic services, to approve the following tournament worker for the athletic services as detailed below. Basketball worker. Item number seven, athletic supplementals, and again, these are for our spring coaches that will be participating this spring, and that's item number seven, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts for the following employees and non-employees as detailed below. Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel action by the superintendent, and I would ask for your consideration and approval this evening.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the personnel items as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel action items recommended by the superintendent as detailed in item L.
Second?
Second.
It has been motion by Mr. Elick and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Is there any discussion?
Question. Dr. Jama, I will assume that these coaches and whatnot have met the requirements, and we're not going to see the problem we had previously?
Absolutely, Mr. Brubaker. We have a, a plan in place that will not allow that to happen again.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, would you call the roll? Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Gettler?
Aye.
Other personnel?
Mr. President, I do not have any items under other personnel as recommended by the superintendent, nor do I have a report tonight after the master planning session, but I just would like to congratulate the City of Elyria, the city government for passing issue six last night. I'd also like to congratulate Mark Jesse and his team for doing a yeoman's job in getting a, a very important issue passed in a very important time, and it took a lot of work and energy by all those individuals who worked hard to get that passed, so congratulations to, to the mayor and the City of Elyria. It's something that is definitely needed. I know having a son who's an Elyria police officer, it's, it's something personal for me, so to, to make sure that my son has the proper equipment as he does his job for the citizens of Elyria. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Board of Education reports.
I would like to say that the reverse raffle, the very pioneer club, reverse raffle was last weekend, and two of our, one of them's sitting next to me won a thousand dollars, and one of them's sitting across, her parents won a thousand dollars.
Oh, my.
It was a good time. But it was a good time, and I think everybody had a good time. Thank you.
And then also, there's a big event coming up here, big fundraiser coming up Friday, too.
Friday night, we have our elementary teams versus the elementary teams fundraiser for the Elyria City Schools bond issue that'll be on the ballot in November, and I, and I could say, this is one of, I've been in the district twenty-seven years, go watch the elementary buildings go competitive against each other, it's been wonderful and good sportsmanship, and, and a lot of spirit that has been developed over the last couple weeks. A lot of hard work has gone into this event that will take place at Elyria High School on Friday evening, as well as the drawing chant, not the drawing itself, but the individuals whose names were drawn tonight to do the game of skill, to try to win one of the four or five grand prizes. So if you're not at Elyria High School on Friday afternoon, you should, or Friday evening, you need to be there because it's going to be the most happening place in the city.
Dr. Jama, I will say that it is, it comes with some disappointment that the board will not be, will not be participating as a team, but, but in the, in the spirit of things, it would, it would really be, it really would be a disappointment for the, for the board to go out and, you know, and, and take advantage, take advantage of those other teams, you know, with, with the incredible skill that I know we could bring to the board.
And Mr. Bax, the concern was we'll be volunteering to have a team, everybody else said that they would not participate because there was no chance of winning.
Yes, and I, I concur with that. Yes.
Well said, Mr. Bax.
Yes. Probably good that we don't play.
For our insurance policy.
That's a good point. That's a good one. Anne, you're on our order.
All right, we will have no executive session tonight, so could I have a motion for a adjournment meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, adjourn the meeting. Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Gettler?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Paul, for coming.